Alright, so we'll call to order the meeting of the planning board on June seventh, twenty twenty-three. We'll call attendance.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan is here.
Amy Glassmire here.
Kevin Hein present.
Deirdre Hobson present.
And Cassandra is with us. The first meeting is town. Right?
Planning board meeting, yes.
Yes. Alright, so our first order of business, if you haven't heard, uh, the apartment project in the village at thirty-one South Main is starting to be continued. They're asking for continuance all the way into October. I think it has to do with fire and handicap access issues they have to think through. Yes, Amy?
Um, I didn't want to cut you off, so if you continue, if you were going to continue.
I was gonna just ask for a motion. What's the date that they want? October eighteenth, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
So we need a motion to continue it to, uh, October eighteen at six thirty?
So before we, before we get to that point and move on, can I make a request?
What's that?
The request is, this is a complicated project with a very unique location and a pretty standard desire on the part of the owner about how they might accomplish their objective. But because it's physically how it's situated, its size, and their objectives, I would like to see, um, more narrative so that we, we have, you know, lots of changes in the graphics that are coming in on the project. But I, I think a narrative going forward would help us a lot in understanding how this is going to ultimately, uh, resolve.
Oh, well, I believe the explanation was that they're thinking about having, instead of building two apartments, one, and I think it's, I think it all circulates around. Park can speak to this better than I can, but handicap and fire issues. That some are triggered by a three-unit building and some are triggered by having just two units there. Or not triggered by having just two. Clark can answer that.
Yeah, there's definitely some building code issues, uh, with the project that didn't seem to be addressed. Um, for example, the exterior walls, um, I mean, the original building predates the building code, certainly zoning. Um, and Avana, what the building code does is protect from fire. Zoning is sort of based on fire distances as well. Um, and the, the thing I brought up was that they, that since their, their exterior walls are so close to the property line that it limits the size of openings and they have to create ratings. And then if they're, if they're mixed use and they're, um, spending more than a hundred thousand dollars or a third of the value of the existing building, then they have to make, um, certain, uh, handicap accessibility, um, provisions that may affect the commercial building, uh, in that, you know, it, they don't have handicap accessible entrances. Some, there are mechanisms for compartmentalizing the work that you're doing, but but the fire ratings and, and handicap access issues are the the most unpleasant types of things you can deal with in an existing, adding to an existing building, just from personal experience.
Yeah.
And I think they're finding that out. I, I, I mean, I'm hoping that they, they hired somebody who knows about these things and they're being informed on what they really have to do to have a realistic project. That was my concern is that the project wasn't.
Yeah, so they have some thinking to do. It's unusual that if they're asking for such a long continuance, but they obviously had some thinking through this project that they need to do that they didn't do before, so. I have no problem continuing it, so the motion, somebody made it, I don't know.
I did. I made it.
Somebody seconded, I'll second.
Second.
Thank you.
So before we get to the end, I would, I, I would like to ask on behalf of the project proponents that they have the opportunity to really have access and, and education about what all of the things Clark just touched on will choose as, or, or will serve as impediments to their objective. And, um, I told, I, I'm not an architect, so I, I, I have to wait on my colleagues to really know. But it does seem that it's an unusual situation, and if we want this to be a project that can go forward, uh, there's a lot of education that is required so that the, all of the, you know, boxes are ticked and not put the, the applicant into a situation which is unending.
Yeah, or certainly if, that they're wasting time on what they're, what they want to do. They, they've got to know what they're up against ahead of time, or they're just sending us pretty pictures.
So, so, so again, Clark, a- as the person who's spoken the most about what are they up against? Could, how, how can we, or what, what is your advisement about how they can arrive at an understanding of what their options are?
Haven't, haven't you already done that, Clark? Haven't you had a conversation with them about this stuff?
Yeah, I talked to Chris Ford about the things, but I, but I also, um, in our
Which I think triggered this request.
I was clear about what the requirements are and how they don't seem to have been met.
Yeah, so I mean, I think Clark has had that conversation with them, and that's what's led to this request for a continuance, but and certainly when they come back in October, they better, we need to have all their ducks in a row, and we can certainly remind them of that. But
All right, I, I wasn't, um, uh, privy to the interactions that Clark had with applicants, so I'm going from the perspective of someone who might not know and what the path is that I should follow so that I can learn what it is I need to do if I wish to continue.
Yeah, I, I, you mean, my, my guess is they're, you know, they're gonna be scared off if they have to do major renovations to the existing building, so they might cut back the project in order to avoid triggering any requirements to touch the existing building.
And, and they do have options, it's just that I'm not gonna tell them what they are. Uh, that's not my job. I basically repeated to Chris Ford, who on behalf of his, uh, ar- architecturally trained, uh, son, was doing the design work.
Anyway, any further, any further discussion about this?
No, I think Clark's right. I mean, it's not our place to tell them what all the possibilities are. They should be have someone they've hired, a professional who knows what they're doing.
And, and it's the stuff, it's the stuff that's the biggest pain of, bane of my existence.
A B.
Unpleasant. It's the unpleasant part of being an architect.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, alphabetical roll call, all in favor of the motion to continue to October eighteenth?
Clark Brewer, aye.
Tom Callahan, aye.
Amy Glassmire, aye.
Deirdre Hobson. Oh, sorry, Deirdre Hobson, aye.
Okay. Don't worry about jumping out of tune. Alright, so the next agenda item is our liaison assignments, and I hope everybody saw Cassandra's summary of what we have. We apparently don't have any liaisons. I, I, Amy is still a liaison to the master plan committee, it's just not meeting, it says, but um, and I, I hope you'll continue that, and I hope you'll, you know, we'll talk about that another night, but I, I think we need to take some initiative as a planning board and being the statutory, statutory body that's in charge of the master plan to start pushing on that rather than let it be, be allowed to die a slow death.
Uh, uh, Mr. Callahan, if we wished that to happen, then there has to be a pathway described by the responsibility of the planning board to light a fire under the, um, select board. And as far as I know, uh, we are a, an, a creature that is, uh, responsive to, but not one that then leads ahead of what the select board approves.
Yeah, that committee is their appointment at the moment, so. I, I'll speak to Jean about it now that, you know, they've had a change. You know, I was just there last night with them and, you know, so it's all kumbaya, and I don't want to get into an unnecessary confrontation because we have other issues that are more important to work on, but it's clear that the master plan is no longer a priority, and there are many who disagree with that. Priority for them, and so I will, I'll, I'll, I'll open up a dialogue about that, but I don't know if we have to get into like an open public confrontation about it quite yet.
My, my, my concern about the master plan is it's, it's a, a document that's available to help municipal, uh, decision makers make decisions and move forward. Certainly, the charge of the zoning bylaw committee is substantially based on the findings, the zoning findings of the, of the master plan. There are some things that need to be followed up on, but, um, I, 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 I wouldn't, I, I, unless there's something to replace the master plan, uh, for, for guidance and goals, goal setting, then, um, I, I, I personally, and not just because I was chairman and worked on it for five or six years, uh, personally would want to make sure that it doesn't get swept under the, under the rug because, um, it's, it's all we have. I mean, there's subsets of planning that we can do. Um, ultimately, whatever the planning board wants to do, we, we do have to get the, the, uh, select board, uh, to understand and go along with us because, um, they would substantially, um, be involved with approving any, any funding. Um, while we could go directly to the town manager and say, look, we need funds for these subset studies, um, we still, we still want the select board to know what, what priorities we have and, and how we think we can make good decisions based on good information.
Um, next week, they're doing their goals and objectives, you know, their annual goals meeting. That's one of the things I learned last night listening to them. Would anyone like to write something up that we can send to them as to, you know, make, make the master plan a priority and why it's important that they, they not just toss it aside, you know? Somebody want to put together a little statement on behalf of this board for that?
Well, I could make a first pass.
I'm happy to work with you on that.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, so that we just need to get to them, you know, ideally no later than Monday, uh, they're um, you know, I have no idea what they're putting in their goals and objectives for this year, but uh, just I think it is something we should bring to their attention, and at least that'll start the dialogue about it, so.
So Tom, since we, sorry.
That's okay, Amy, this is free form.
Okay, um, uh, since we have not identified new members of pre-existing committee assignments, I don't think that they exhaust themselves by the sheer passage of time. Instead, I would say we need to look at the roles and responsibilities of individuals on, on individual committees that we have already assigned people to be a part of, and then subtract that from the total number that we have to find somebody to be a, a member of. Uh, because, for example, I'm on the master plan implementation committee. I am by, cause I agreed to be on the, uh, historic preservation committee, uh, it, just to keep the planning board informed. Um, and I think I sit on one other committee, and so I think we should have a formal process whereby we ask individuals to take a position on each one of these so that we have coverage.
That's what we're gonna do next. By the way, Jackie Dormitzer gave her presentation to the select board. They asked for an update of, you know, so she outlined, you know, what they're looking at in terms of a historic district, and, you know, they're gonna be moving forward on that, so. I think that is, you know, and I, I had mentioned something, it's not exactly a zoning issue per se, you know, you're not gonna create a historical zoning district, but it's tangentially related, so I, you know, yes, please stay, stay on top of that and work with Jackie on it, but as far as these other committees go, um, we haven't had a member find open space in three or four years. I don't know that we need to, but
It's not been, it
It's been since I, it's since, I think
Well, as a correction, we did have somebody on open space, and then that person's peeled off. Remember, we've lost two people that had been on the board for some time, and they each occupied one of those spaces, so. Well, it's not that bad. We've, we've only aligned for two years.
That's fine. Does anybody want to volunteer for it, or should we, or is it your turn?
Tom, I'll solve one problem real quick. I will agree to take Chris's spot on the community preservation. Um, you know, I, I talked to Russ, my understanding is that really the meetings don't start again until beginning of the year. Um, which works for me on many levels, uh, in addition to, uh, taking care of my father-in-law, I now have a, uh, additional, uh, master, mass, massive problem with a very, very dear friend who's uh, been diagnosed with very severe cancer, so I am ready to, um, say yes to that, I'll do it. Um, and I would talk to Russ about how many times I, I need to be
And if, if something comes up, it's months away, you know.
Yeah.
You're not compelled to do it, so no objection from anybody else. Deirdre will be the liaison, community preservation. As, as, I was getting back to open space, how often do they meet now, Cassandra? If they meet.
That, that I'm not sure. It wasn't, um, very clear on the website how often that they meet.
I show once a month.
Yeah, my, my thought is just
Usually on Tuesday nights.
My thought is on a night where we have, we don't have a lot of businesses, maybe just to invite them and touch base with them. Because, you know, the open space plan has a seven-year plan of certain objectives, I think. My perception is that when Peter resigned, Peter Prescatori resigned, a lot of initiative went with that, so, uh, maybe we'll just deal with open space that way as periodically touching base with them. Um, affordable housing, Kevin, you used to do that, right? Now, who did?
No, that was, uh, Paul.
Well, that was Paul Cleary, yeah, yeah. Um, I don't know if that's the super intense need, I would the more I think about it, affordable housing would be better if they were involved with the zoning bylaw committee, because we're looking to fill two seats, um. But
Well, one thing
I don't know if anybody has got a strong feeling about joining that one. Um, I think community reservation is important, we should and this, this would be, you know, somewhat less but important, and then this, this new sidewalks committee, I don't know, are they asking for a planning board liaison? The sidewalks committee?
So I looked at the different charges for the committees, and that was one that specifically called out a planning board or a open space and rec representative on their charge. Um, it doesn't look like there is anybody that is currently on the open space and rec committee that is also on that committee, so I would assume that the seat is unassigned.
Yeah, I, I, given, given that the level of priority that the select board's putting to that committee, I think that's one we probably should have some representation on, so. Affordable housing, I'm sort of here, you know, and kind of reverse it, rather have them involved in the zoning process than us having to go sit at their meetings, but, uh, I, I, is it's open, open to everybody what you'd like to volunteer for or not volunteer for?
I, I was on affordable housing for a couple of years, the, the new, the new version, not the, not, a- as well as the old version of the affordable housing.
Yes, that was a long, long time ago, we're land far away.
Seems like yesterday, that was like two thousand eight. Didn't we all resign in two thousand nine, because the select
Something like that, yeah, we resigned in
They're like, no, we don't wanna
We don't want to develop any affordable housing, so we resigned en masse, and then this, that was like, yeah, a long time ago, but anybody have any, uh,
Yeah, I, you know, I, 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 I will, just to comment on that, I mean, I think we have a kind of problem in this town where, like, use the town hall, mu- multiple committees over decades.
Yeah.
People make an effort, they hire consultants, they get to the goalpost, they present, and then it gets killed for whatever reason, whether it's the shifting prior, shifting sands of priorities or sticker shock or, or whatever it is. But, you know, it was clear from that first pass of the affordable housing committee that the, the selectmen just, they were like, well, we just got Avalon approved, so we don't need to bother with that anymore.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's, yeah, that's
In the case, it's like, why waste the time of, of professionals spending their, their evenings, um, uh, trying to do something?
Yeah, I hear you.
Well, you know, the answer to that is it, it provides cover for people that are, should be in a position to lead and manage this town to say that they're doing something. And then it doesn't get across the finish line, that's the biggest part of actually producing something. And it's easy to say, oh, there was a fumble right before the, um, you know, before the crossing the goal line, that's where we're at. And then something gets tabled and put off again. It's pretty clear what the pattern is here.
Yeah, no, it's been a pattern for, you know, more than a decade, but it, 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 it's disrespectful, I think, to the people who make the effort to try to solve problems, address and solve problems, and then, um, their, their efforts are
It's pretty, it's pretty disheartening too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and, and once again, too, it's a real lack of understanding of what we're talking about. We're talking about affordable housing in Cohasset. We're not talking about affordable housing in Roxbury or, or Brockton. For God's sakes, they, we need, that needs to be a huge education piece. Huge. I mean, I have neighbors, I want those people near me, not those people. People, that's me.
Right, there's some, there's often confusion about affordable housing being low-income housing or section eight housing or something other than, you know, like, cause a comprehensive permit is mixed income. You know, you get twenty-five percent of affordable or what's median, um, it's, it's median income and then full market rate.
Yeah, I have, I have, I have neighbors down here who are very concerned about these two habitat places going up. Are they gonna look like junkyards? What? No.
No, that's, that's very common misconception and, and it's important to educate everybody on what affordable housing is and what it isn't in this day and age. And, and for, and, and how it relates, uh, to Cohasset. I mean, we're, we're pretty lucky to have Avalon in, in a way, having the census take so long. Um, where we've had Safe Harbor for a while, and the, the, the project at Stop and Shop and the One Pleasant Street both kicked in extra units so that all the units would count. Makes a big difference, um, to try to get that and stay above that ten percent.
Yep. Alright, well, just to move us along, I guess we are, I don't hear anybody volunteering for anything, you know, and my fear about the sidewalk committee is that once they get into sticker territory, that the same thing might happen to that committee. That a lot of work will go into studying and thinking and planning, and then they're gonna find out what it costs, which is, we already know sidewalks are outrageous, and you know, so it's, it is hard to sit here and ask anybody here on this committee to get involved in that effort where it may, may not, uh, bear, bear any fruit. Yeah, Amy.
Um, I would like to make a recommendation that the planning board, uh, invite the committees that we are supposed to be staffing in some way to meet together as a, a body of the whole of the committees we have a responsibility to interact with. And first be, uh, uh, informed of what is expected. And the second is to determine where the gaps are. Where, I feel like we're shooting in the dark. And these are all things which decades ago we committed to being a part of. And I feel it's not something I'm comfortable with deciding on an, as sort of, what do we know, what do we not know? Uh, basis, so I would recommend that we have a working group of the committees. If that's possible, or some mechanism by which we know where we stand, and then make a determination of how many planning board members we need on which one of the committees, and whether or not there are gaps in the committees that we want to weigh in on as part of, uh, the responsibility of those committees.
It, it sounds like you're suggesting, uh, that we have a joint meeting with, um, affordable housing.
Yeah, but, but affordable housing, open space.
Alright, what, what are we doing on the twenty-eighth? No, the
One at a time though, right?
What's our next meeting? What's our next meeting? Isn't it a dead meeting? We don't have much to do?
No, but, but, Tom, wait a minute. I, I guess I feel that we, they're guests of ours. We're asking them to do something for us, so I would like to give them enough time and make it look more, enough sufficiently professional that they know that we really need them to come. So I, I wouldn't just pull a, a date out of the sky, I would actually plan it as a planner.
Alright, well. So with, with that being said, uh, your next two meetings are, uh, I believe July twelfth is the later one, um, and June twenty-first is the earlier one.
Okay.
Um, there isn't anything presently scheduled for July twelfth. Today was the deadline for any new submissions, and we did not receive any. Um, so both are looking, both of those meetings are wide open.
So I would, I would make
Well, I, I, again, I mean, this is where some of us disagree. This is all not rocket science, uh. I think on the twenty-first, we should invite the affordable housing committee, doesn't have to be the whole committee, can just be the chair and the open space committee, and we can talk about what they're up to. Do they feel they need a liaison from this board or not? Where can we keep, how and we can otherwise keep in touch with each other as to what each other is up to? I, I don't think it requires a lot of heavy lifting to get ready for a meeting like that. Um, I would like to think with, with July, if we truly have nothing to do, is to not meet. And, and it'll be more difficult to get people during the summer. Um, remembering that we're also calling on these people to, if not be members of the zoning bylaw committee, but certainly to interact with the zoning bylaw committee, I mean, we, you know, we're, we're gonna get to that in a moment of where we are, but there, there's certainly the issues of housing, it's something that we have to discuss with them soon, and I, you know, I don't want to overburden them with coming to other board meetings. I want them to focus on where we really need their focus, but
Tom, the, the things that we talked about the other night with the judge, uh, at the zoning bylaw committee, like housing types and, and how to identify them in the in the, uh, table of uses, um, the, the affordable housing in their, in their, um, their housing production plan, uh, as well as other documents have, um, a pretty good idea on, on different housing types that may need to be identified in the
Yeah, and I, and I want, I want them to give their input to that because they know the damn housing production plan far better than I do.
The, the missing middle, I think, um, Lauren put into her, uh, report on housing choice. Um,
Yeah.
As an example.
Yeah. Alright, well. Any objection to inviting them to come to this board on the twenty-first?
No, that's good.
Let's do that. And then depending on the schedule of the bylaw committee, I think we're gonna need to invite the affordable housing committee to the bylaw committee meeting sometime soon.
And, and if, if we could ask them to, uh, be prepared to talk about different housing types that, um, maybe, may, may apply to the forty-B type, uh, units on the S H I, uh, or maybe, uh, lowercase affordability, affordability, uh, types that, um, we think we would want to encourage, or that they would want to encourage.
Uh-huh, okay. That, that will give them a framework of what it is they come to us to speak about, so we're not just having some open-ended
Yeah, how you doing? Good, good. How are you? Good, good.
Alright. If there's, if there's a particular issue, Amy, that you want them to address, let's say it, and we'll, you know, put it in the invitation to them, but I, I think right now, the immediate focus is the type of housing versus the zoning changes we're looking at undertaking.
We have new people on the board in full voting capacity. Whether or not they know exactly how each one of these committees work and what our role is in interfacing with them is not clear to me. It would be It would be, I think, professionally uh reasonable to assume that we introduce them and we also ask that it, this is a uh discussion that first updates us on where you are, what your responsibilities are and where you stand with them. And then second, indicate where they feel that they need support from the planning board in order to do their duty.
That's, that's great.
Okay. You're getting all that, Cassandra? We'll 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 form an invitation document for them to that outlines that, and they should, for the benefit of all of us, summarize the, you know, give us the executive summary of the housing production one. And so I'm not, I'm not sure if anybody's read it.
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to um reach out to the chairs of each of the groups with kind of a form email that states what we're looking to have a conversation about when invite them to the twenty first meeting.
Yeah, and I don't, and I don't want it worded in such a way that people on the select board don't think, ooh, we're usurping their authority because these are boards that they appoint, not that we appoint, but I don't, I don't wanna get into territorial problems.
You don't wanna worry about that too much, Tom.
No, I know, but I do, uh so. Um, all right, anyway, so that concludes the agenda business. I thought we'd take some time, if we had the time, to talk about some other things and quickly I'll start, but this is, this is really an open session for anybody to talk about anything about how we operate and everything. Um, the bylaw group, so I had a meeting myself with Judge Petler and Caraman on Friday, and then the bylaw group met on Monday. And then we gave our update to the select board last night. Uh Dave Farrag and I were there. Uh, you got the memo that I gave to the selectmen, the select board. Which outlines uh the policy issues we wanted some decisions on or some guidance and then, you know, basically the plan for the next two town meetings. Um, on the bylaw committee, we're starting into the, to the actual work on Article Four, which is the Table of Uses. Um, the judge is working on, you know, at first the broad outline. The philosophy that's held for the last two years is still holding that we're going to try to simplify the table of uses quite a bit, going towards more broad categories of uses rather than the micromanaged list that we have. And um you know, we talked about housing choice and I asked the selectmen, like I asked this board last meeting about, you know, some policy direction about housing choice. And, you know, it was hard to get, you know, a hardcore decision, a firm decision on a direction in one meeting, just dumping it on them, but um, you know, there was the thought about bare minimum compliance, and then there's the thought, there are thoughts like that was on this board, if we should maybe do a little more than bare minimum, bare minimum being just zone the the correct amount of acreage, whether the property is feasibly can be redeveloped or not, which is one thought. Uh, or actually zone for where something might actually happen, and we might get some development under under housing choice. So it was kind of a mixed bag. I think sentiment overall from the select board was hard to read. I couldn't who's got a mic on? Who's got a mic on? Somebody's got a mic on. But anyway, um, it was hard to get a read, like it was four want this, one wants that. It was, you know, it was kind of a mixed bag, but it got them thinking about it and I think in the bylaw committee, I think we we're coming to the consensus that, you know, the housing choice district, if we develop one, it's gonna be on three A. We're not going to shove that into residential districts soon. And and we probably are moving towards splitting it up or between the two stations, North Situate and Cohasset. But perhaps the south side of town has more readily developable land. Um, even where there's buildings, you know, easily more redeveloped than than up around Cohasset Station, so.
Tom, to that point?
Yeah.
About two stations and given the proximity of um the um not the non Cohasset Station to the Situate, North Situate Station. Was it ever brought up about actually having an outreach um at some level from Cohasset Government to Situate Government to see if something could be done in conjunction with them? To meet both towns' efforts and do something better than just
Yeah, that's a great idea. It hasn't come up, but uh, you know, again, when I was at that seminar out in Worcester a couple of months ago, I ran into a member of the planning board in Situate who said something to me about a multifamily project being proposed on their side of the line along Henry Bailey Turner Road or Henry Turner Bayne Road. Um, so you know, there is, they're looking at development in that area. I think we probably should coordinate. And then, you know, this this developer that approached me with their counsel last week. I said, I reminded them that the state highway redesign is done. They are going to start construction, I think, later this year of the south stretch of three A. And to all of a sudden have multifamily housing projects popping up and adding to traffic loads, maybe you know, that's gonna have to be coordinated with the state very, very carefully, because they're not going to go back to square one and redesign three A again. Um, so
So Tom, I would just recommend that that outreach be done. Can, you know, we we understand the concept here, but, you know, the powers that be that would make that outreach effort actually happen need to act on it now because time is of essence and otherwise it's a lost opportunity.
That's a good idea. And I, you know, one of the things I I asked of the select board is to make sure the zoning by law committee can reach out to some of these other boards like Harbor, Alternative Energy, Affordable Housing, because, you know, what we're doing with zoning touches so many other interests and there's many stakeholders. But I think for us to just on our own reach out to another town, that's something I'd probably have to run by the select board because there are other issues between the town, our town and Situate going on. So we don't just in isolation start to approach Situate about a joint coordination in North
There's no harm to to over
No, there's no harm in it, but right now we have issues with them over the navigation by law and sewer. So, you know, I I I don't, I wouldn't wanna go in without their eyes wide open.
Well, I was gonna make the same suggestion that uh Kevin um just articulated because when we got the grant for the corridor study originally, it was a multi-town grant application. And the the state looks favorably on towns working together to address and solve common problems and certainly activity, if if Situate were to to add to their North Situate presence, um the activity takes place across municipal lines and it it would be a good idea to see what they're thinking about changing in terms of zoning relative to the um I'm sorry, it's not housing choice. It's it's the MBTA. What's the name of the the program that we're?
No, it's actually, the legislation was called Housing Choice.
Okay, so
And it was, it was designed, it was designed around using MBTA stations as the
Right.
focal point for the developments.
From from my ten years on the M A P C South Shore Coalition, trying to find every town's working on the same problems. They're at different levels and and we can really benefit from from working together and finding out what the other towns are thinking about, what their, what their uh municipal staff have already got underway and and open the door to communication, I think, is
Yeah, I I don't disagree. I'm just saying, it's, I'm just saying it's something I would have to run by and get the okay of the select board.
Of course, but
Because there's
Open dialogue. I mean, uh to 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 some extent, Cassandra would probably talk on a regular basis to the planner at in in Situate. Well, I don't know who who's the planner now?
I actually don't know. I've never spoken with them.
All right. So Tom, I would go forth with that. I would, I would go right to the select board.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So getting back to the bylaw committee, so right now we're focusing on developing the new Article Four, which will have a lot of the same textual stuff, like we have a list of banned noxious uses and trailers and junkyards. All that would stay. It's the tables that will get really redone quite a bit. And then when you make changes to Article Four, it's gonna, it's gonna generate new definitions in Article Two. It's going to generate, those those terms will have to be brought into Article Five, which is the Table of Dimensions. And right now, the thinking um, you know, because of the ambitious program, we're trying to do it all by the fall. Article Five, we will need to do housekeeping in the fall to, so the terminology changes we're making in Article Four, the Table of Uses will have to be carried over into Article Five as a housekeeping measure. Anything that substantively might change in Article Five with respect to you know, uh frontage setbacks, area of height um will probably be left to spring. It with the, on the height, with the exception of the harbor and with the exception, if we are expanding the use of ADUs, alternative accessory dwelling units. Um, we will have to change height in for an accessory building to deal with that, as was discussed, you know, at the last town meeting. Um, so for changing Article Four brings around some changes to Article Two. It can bring changes to the accessory dwelling by law by pulling it into four eighteen, the village by law, pulling that into four. Um, did discuss with the selectmen that, you know, in the har, the village, the only real substantive change might be some buffer zoning around the boundaries where it meets the residential districts.
You mean transitional areas?
Some kind of transitional, yeah, where you have maybe a grid to set back a lower height limit or something there.
You think that would be outside the current village boundary or inside?
It would probably be inside of it. I would think, but that's what we have to discuss. The idea has been, the idea has been thrown out there without any thought about the substance yet. So basically, the fall, the fall town meeting right now is looking at Article Four and the things that will spring off Article Four. Article fifteen, the accessory dwelling units we'll deal with. Hopefully, we'll have any changes necessary to the wind and solar articles. Article three, the zoning districts, we may bring forward a consolidation of the commercial just zoning in the harbor and the commercial zoning on three A possibly. Then the spring, next spring, would be any substantive changes to Article Five. And then anything new on climate resiliency and any changes we make to our watershed protection district and our flood claim, which would all be related to climate related things. And then, you know, at the end of all of that, maybe the last article in the spring town meeting, or it would be if we decide to, you know, do a mass consolidation of the twenty two articles we have now and consolidate them into ten, which has been proposed, but um, so we are splitting things up from what, you know, the plan might have been a month ago. And again, the judge is is her, her input is invaluable to this. Um and as far as, you know, we asked them for new members and I I got an email that the zoning board may be coming around. They discussed it last night. After, I found this out after I talked to the select board. Except that the member they have sort of nominated to be the representative to the zoning by law committee wasn't at the meeting, so
Of course, yeah, whoever's not there, you you nominate them.
They nominated somebody on vacation, so. And then I made it clear to the select board that we need, you know, we need to have a full seven members, because Monday night, um you know, uh one of our members was out for a personal reason and one was a little late, so we were sweating a quorum for a little bit and and given the workload that we have, it was essentially right now, I'm being told as of last night, the town meeting is probably late November, not an early December one. So, you know, we have to have these articles ready to go through the normal vetting process uh by September. But unlike the last time, I've said to the select board, zoning board, this board, we're going to you know, bring everybody into this sooner, so you're not just dealing with it at the last minute during the formal vetting process. And given that us, given that our summer right now is shaping up as pretty light permitting wise, um you know, we'll have the time for this board to vet some ideas as they come forward. Uh, what I will do is um I don't think it will help, the the judge's outline about Article Four, I don't know if you wanna see it. Fine, but she's, she's refining it for our next meeting, which is gonna be June twenty eighth. So I don't know, maybe better to see it then after she refines it somewhat.
Sure.
You know, and then it are, perhaps if we do meet in July, we can, we can weigh in on it. Um, what else did we want to talk about quickly? Um So a- as far as, you know, the vacancies too, if anybody here has any ideas for somebody for this by law committee or for our associate position.
Tom, did you talk to Farad?
Uh, I did. I did, but then um when I mentioned, I I guess when I mentioned that idea to town council on Friday, they just worried that we'd have three planning board members, although it would be a non, you know, Farad on the by law committee would be a non-voting planning board member. I I threw the idea out to him, but it's again, it's his time commitment. He's he's taking on some things with the by law committee, you know, where he's, you know, giving his time. He's gonna be away this summer for a couple of weeks in Egypt, you know, so um, I guess, you know, certainly ask him again, but if anybody's got any ideas of somebody who'd be a good candidate for either position, so with our associate position.
What kind of person are we looking for to kind of round out our areas of interest? A pulse, a brain?
But I I I I, I mean, it's it's different. It's, I mean, I think
Reasonably articulate.
My thinking is different for this board than the by law committee. Um but I guess I have a certain, I have a certain bias that I wouldn't wanna see on either one, frankly, but I'm not gonna say it. I think it's pretty obvious.
I'm just gonna stick my neck out. I mean, uh s- someone who has an expertise on in um team building or um consensus building, conflict resolution, that kind of thing would be, it would be great to, and there's, I I I, I mean, I've, I've I met some experts on on this. I just don't know uh if they live in town or they'd, they'd wanna um volunteer, but to me, that, that would be the the greatest benefit to, I think, our board is to find, you know, how we someone who can help us how, figure out how we talk about solving problems, addressing and then solving problems that we s- we see in front of us.
Yeah, that, you you divide, Clark and I had a long conversation after our last meeting and we talked about some things we might wanna talk about tonight. I think that's one of them, and I'm I'm gonna give you the free floor in a minute uh for that, but um, you know.
Well, I'm talking about what what kind of other associate member?
Yeah, I I mean, again, I think Kevin's point, it it's particularly uh with the by law committee is, you you gotta wanna put in the work, take the interest, uh put in the work, do some somewhat heavy lifting. Um, but like you know, on this board too, I mean, if we wanna have liaison assignments and you wanna get involved in other things, you know, you gotta be willing to just put in the time commitment for it, that's all. Uh um, and, you know, I I think we've been fortunate in getting people with with brains and who think things through, but that that's really the the associate position is intended to be sort of on the job learning and um that's a joint appointment with the select board and it will fill, you know, one year left of whatever was left in Kevin's associate term. I don't know how much was left, but
It's a Troika appointment?
I think it's a, I think any vacancy on our board is a joint select board, planning board appointment. So, but just for
Find out to be sure.
But just for a one-year term, it's not, if like if Kevin's remaining associate term is two years, it's not for the two years. That's what we found out with Grady's and what you know, Chris only got elected for a year.
Yes.
And now Yeah, so, yes, Amy, you're muted.
Thank you for letting me know. Um, you know, anytime we have these situations in which we have complex multi-functional questions, we need to get answers for so that we can proceed. Why don't we hire professionals to do it? I mean, asking somebody to step into the the position of adjudicating between different points of view and or uh really different philosophical points of view. Uh, we end up ourselves sort of watering everything down so that not one person or the other's idea actually emerges as the crisp idea we wish.
What do you, I I have, what are you suggesting?
Like, I I am suggesting when we have difficult things to solve, that we can't solve rather than bringing somebody in on a temporary basis uh as you're describing, as an uh an associate member who will know nothing about what we do. I would suggest we ask for resources to hire professionals who can adjudicate between Complex issues, which are many that we face.
You mean, you know, applying.
I gotta, I gotta put, I gotta put a stop to that. I mean, that, I gotta, I. One of the other points I was going to make that I made. Repeatedly, I think, is that. We have to make our decisions. In the real world and in the context of the by law and state law. I don't know what you're talking about right now. Clark has suggested a mem- a a member that might have skills in interpersonal relations. I don't know if we need that or not. But in terms of.
Resolution.
The expertise.
Yes, I am talking about professionals with conflict, conflict resolution capabilities, which is.
But I I I want to distinguish it from the fact that we have legal expertise at our hands at every meeting. We have engineering expertise on any project we wanted, if we want to hire somebody. And I'm not sure what you're talking about where we need some other outside expertise. I don't think we have that much conflict in this board. I've seen far, far worse in Cohasset and certainly in other places. We are going, you know, Clark and I discussed this at length. We're going to agree to disagree. We're not always going to be five zero voters. Is going to be timed.
I mean, Amy.
But that that just because we have a four.
I had brought up in terms of the, um, expertise for that next. Next, um, member, wouldn't that be great?
Or, yeah, it would, but we don't, we're not looking to. For a referee.
I'm not sure about hiring, uh, but but to Amy's point, um. You know, the the reality is having a. Having, um, someone that. Can go through decision-making modeling. Conflict resolution, um. Consensus building as not as a team building exercise, but, um, we we have this problem in. In our town of silos, right, of committee silos. And now with Zoom, each individual member of every committee is sort of a silo. And and I think that post-COVID, we we need to to work on. Um, our. Ability to discuss and. Understand where everybody's coming from, because I think together we're we're stronger than if. There's just one person. Leading and saying. What? We have to do next, um, so that. Every individual planning board member can can lead based on their 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 personal goals and interests as. A member of this committee.
And I I'll just say this, that every committee. Well, there there's a structure to it that has to be respected for it to work. Okay.
I mean, but.
And and look, it does, you know, I I don't want to get into the personalities of different chairs. I mean.
No, I'm just.
Complaints about my style, complaints about Amy's style, complaints about yours.
No, I'm I'm talking.
There's a certain structure that we need to follow. In terms of just running a meeting efficiently and not looking like fools in front of a public.
Absolutely.
Now, as far, this is something we talked about a long time, Cassandra, we need, really need to work. We need to get back to live meetings or hybrid meetings.
Well, I think that will help, but.
Yeah, I really do. I I I this has got, this has got to stop. I I don't think it's the best for the public. I don't, I mean, it's great in some settings. I use it in court all the time, but it's. It's, I don't, I haven't thought since we sat at the hotel hearings that it was a good thing.
I mean, i- in terms of the future of Cohasset and, uh, kind of having a cohesive understanding of where everyone's coming from, it, you know. The the selectmen ignoring the master plan and then e- everybody else saying, hey, well, wait a minute, we did that for a reason and we paid money for it too. Um, those, those are the kind of big picture things that I think that we we probably need a nudge. By a an expert that can help us with the methodology for consensus building. And I and I think that's what Amy's talking about. I I wouldn't want you to, uh, misinterpret what what Amy had. Um, followed up on saying, I I don't think we need a consensus builder. Decision making, making matrix person for every meeting that the planning board has, but. For multiple committees and for kind of the town leaders, if you will, whatever that means. This is a great idea and a great opportunity.
That I don't disagree with and and right now the only system that's available to us is forcing ourselves onto the select board's agenda. So they pay attention to the rest of us or at least. Know that there's issues out that the.
Maybe there's some other way to do it then.
Per- perhaps, I I that. I'd like to let Kevin add his hand up. But, um, Kevin, go ahead.
Think these are all, this is a healthy discussion. Um. I think what I heard Amy and and Clark mentioned is, you know, perhaps. Having access to the way we have access to outside expert counsel. Um, we have outside, um, engineering, um, professional opinions and judgment. Do we have outside, um, access to and may not just be for our meetings here or point we're working on, but. Maybe it might be in our interfacing with the public or even interfacing with the select board, other boards. Um, a a professional facilitator, you know, those exist. And I just want to know, I think the quick answer is, do we have that or not? I don't know if we do. Um, Clark's idea of us bringing someone on the board that that has that is great, but it's really pie in the sky. You know, there's only so much being with have people have with life to pick up. A committee assignment and to carve out an evening and have discussions that are really important and to do approvals per. Rules and regulations and then get back to their other life and profession and everything else. We're going to only get the people that. Can carve out some time, whether they have experience or they don't, or they have the niche we're looking for or not. And if we all want to go back to full-time meetings in person, that's going to carve out a whole swath of people that can't even attend those. For whatever reasons that they have on a personal level. So be careful what you wish for and the benefits of one thing versus another. In person versus hybrid versus just remote. They all have some benefits and disadvantages across the board. So I think this is a healthy discussion, Tom. I haven't been on other committees and stuff, but I think, you know, that the way we have a healthy discussion of things. Maybe air some things. The reality is we don't come to unanimous decisions, but. I think with the important ones, we come pretty damn close to it. If not deliver that is good. And I think we're not in a bad place and I'll just leave it at that, although I do need to fill that associate role.
I agree. I I just don't know what problem we're trying to solve on this board is, yeah, we have, we've had some personality issues over the. Since I've been on and and. Uh, but they're not insurmountable and I don't think we're like not all, not speaking to each other outside and. And I, you know, you can probably count how many dissenting votes on one hand over the course of the, you know, now three.
Yeah, no, I I'm not necessarily thinking any reason we. Need one at this moment in time, perhaps Amy with more additional details or thought on it could pinpoint to something, but. I mean, maybe the question just is, is do we have access to that? I think there is going to have to be some lifting and facilitating. Of of decisions that need to be met at the select board level. And paths forward on a number of big issues that we're wrestling with and other issues. Um, and maybe that's where that, you know, having something like that to provide the nexus so that. Your me, you walk away from those meetings that you set up to come away with some answers. You have the answers on in a path forward. As opposed to wasting your time and carving out time on the board and not coming to a decision on things that we need to move forward on.
Yes, well, I I don't know. I certainly think they're facing a lot on their plate, so. Cassandra, could you just maybe just summarize what goes on in day-to-day in the staff? Like, do you have any idea what Concom's up to? Because you talked to Charlotte or do you know what? The health board's up to, what even the select board is up to? I I is there that kind of interaction? Is there staff meetings at that level?
There aren't staff meetings at that level. Um, there are certainly some things that are. In discussion between the departments if it is relevant, but I don't know about like day-to-day things.
I'm sorry, who did I cut off? Deirdre or Amy?
I just had a question. Cohasset's never had a system where. The town col- the town office collects clerk's office, whoever collects people. There are people out there who would love to get involved, but they don't know how to. But we don't have a a base. When I was on three different boards, nonprofits in Boston, we had a list of people. When it was time to recruit, we could go to that list and look and say, oh. And you could call somebody and talk to them and, oh, no, right now's not a good time, but leave me on the list. I'm still very interested in getting involved. Do we have something like that in this town?
Well, for years we had. The back of the town report and then they would also attach it to the town meeting or into a a whole list and, you know, you'd put priority. One, two, three of committees you'd be interested in joining and that was collected and.
Okay.
It was used at some points in time. I don't know that it exists anymore. Or it is exist, is it up to date in any way, shape or form? And 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 we're left to this. Recruiting on, you know, broadcasting at meetings, hey, we need some members, you know. Yes, Cassandra.
Um, I was going to say, I obviously I never saw those hard copy versions, so I don't know what they looked like, but there is a digital version that. On the website that. Folks can submit saying that they have an interest in any number of the boards or committees in town. I it gets sent to Tracy up in the select board's office, so I don't know if she keeps like a running list of people who have. Inquired who may be relevant for these seats. She very well may. I just, I don't know the answer to that.
Can you, can you ask her, you know, by the way, we had somebody who got five write-in votes in Kevin's election. Um. I don't know, she interested in being an associate member? Let's ask Tracy too. Do we have anybody who within, let's say, the last year? Has expressed an interest about being on the planning board? You might not get that because it's an elected board, but perhaps you do, or if somebody's interested in the zoning board of appeals, for example. They might be a candidate for this, uh. If you could, if you wouldn't mind checking with Tracy, but yeah, I I thought the paper version that we used to have was translated to the website, but. You don't, you don't hear many people refer to it that it's actually being used a lot, so. Amy.
Um, I I guess what I am trying to communicate and I'm obviously not doing a very good job of it is. We as a board cannot make. The scale of decisions we need to make in order to achieve our goal. And the reason is, is that we are buffeted on one side by what we can do as it accords with the select board. And on the other side, our own personal opinions. So when you end up in a situation of vice. Would you like to be squeezed to death? Or would you like to have somebody that actually says, I am here to help you? Come to the results that you would like to do, recognizing that it's not going to be perfect. But that it's going to be workable and you're all at the end going to say, I agree. And I think we are dealing with issues that are sophisticated enough. That if you're not living it and breathing it every single moment of the day. And you do it once, one week or the other, that you're going to come out with the outcome you're looking for. You're always going to satisfy. So that means that you're not going to get what you want, but it's not going to be something that's going to kill you. So then rather than doing that, normally you have a per- process leader that's totally disinvolved. But comes in to provide you with the capabilities needed to make decisions. Which do have integrity and veracity, which are really important if you're going to have to then speak to something like the select board.
Well, I I. Again, this is, I I'm not trying to be insulting at all, but this is where I need the connection to the real world, um.
No, I think this is, this is real.
That is the real world.
Where has then, where has there been a problem where we haven't been able to make a major decision? Where has that been a problem? There have been times that you, Amy, have said we can't make a decision when it's within our statutory purview and it's in the bylaw for us to make a decision. And it is a problem is there's a lot of disconnect from the bylaw, you know, we go off on these tangents about eighty years from now. And all relevant issues, but we have to be focused on the law.
We're we're talking about, how do you build consensus among municipal leaders so that we're.
I'm talking about this.
Decisions for the future of Cohasset and it's not just for the planning board. It's.
Okay, fine.
On that, I think.
Fine, that's a problem for the select board to handle. I don't know, but.
No, I think we could take leadership and and and, look, this is something that we think we need for the future of Cohasset. And I mean, I think Amy's circling around the concept that's a really good idea. Or or maybe we both are, Amy. I don't know.
Well, what is, so we are, is it some kind of, I mean, there've been. There've been attempts in the past to try to bring boards together in a single place or.
There was a Kennedy put together a a powwow, a couple of, there was the.
Wasn't there a powwow?
And it was like something else. Those are, those are good ideas, maybe not as direct. Uh, in terms of problem solving. As, uh, I think what we're talking about here.
All right, I'm just trying to envision what this would be. Are we, are we convening the public? In a non-voting, non-decision-making town meeting to. Air all of these issues about what the town and get a sense of priorities, because. It is obvious at the last town meeting that there was a big priority for a lot of people in the inside baseball team. And that the public was totally disconnected with and the public was. The public was incorrectly saying, you know, schools, a town hall, it's an even, you know, it's an either or and it wasn't could be all. There is a disconnect, obviously, and because. You know, it's a small set of us that participate in these committees. It's a slightly larger, but still a small set that comes to town meeting. And then we have a lot of people that then go to vote and will just say, no, 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 if there's anything involves money. But how do we, so how do we do that? Uh, is it just, I mean, we can get the boards all together and and build.
Let let Amy, let Amy talk.
Team building, but.
One of the things that I've been struggling with is that. We have a role to represent. Our elected. Body. To come to some. Decision about an issue that will lead us into the future. It's not about what I think personally. And it's not about what I have to worry about with regard to the select board. What I have to do is to come up with the best decision based on the evidence. That exists in my domain, which is in the planning board. And if it gets into a a tussle when it shows up at the select board. I am an elected official, they are an elected official. It is our responsibility to lay stuff on the table that's about planning responsibilities and then they listen. But in the end, it's our job with that information to try to steer. In light of the fact that we were elected to do that. And I don't, I am not fearful of what the select board is going to say.
I'm not either, no dispute.
But you're playing them off, you're playing us off against them. That's what it feels like.
I I'm just gonna, I I'm gonna offer right here that that's.
I I might, my, look, I I am not afraid of the select board and 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 making our decisions we need to make. All I am asking this board to do is that everybody. Have your bylaw in front of you and you make decisions based in the law. We can't go off on crazy tangents just because it pops into our head that something should be a certain way. And we do it all the time. And it's all well and good, and maybe that means if we can change the law, we need to change the law, but we can't make decisions that are not based in the law. Period. And we go way off on tangents and I can sit here and watch applicants and their experts. Eyes rolling at some of the comments they hear from this board. All right, now, if we if if we make a decision on a project within our per- legal purview. Based on the law and that happens to conflict with some wider town policy. I'll tell you right now, I don't give a crap if it's the right decision. And back when I was a selectman, you know, I I used to hate that boards like this would come and say, well, we're independently elected and you can't tell us what to do. Well. In the structure of Massachusetts government, whether we like it or not, we do have these different boards, some elected, some not. But the select board still is the chief executive authority in the town that sets the overall town policy. We on the land use permitting boards, us zoning, help, border help and CONCOM, we are quasi judicial, we're. A unique creature and we have certain powers and most times. Your select board stays out of the nitty-gritty of our decisions, but they are yet still the larger. Policy-making board. And right now. We are undergoing a project that this board is intimately involved in and needs to be, which is to to reform our zoning bylaw for the first time in. No, almost forty years. And we need their support. So I want, if I'm going to fight with the board as the select board, I'm going to fight with, pick my battles. Because look at what they do when it doesn't meet their priorities. They've killed the master plan committee. They're. Hot to trot on sidewalks and fields now because they have a constituency that wants. Hot to trot on sidewalks and fields now because they have a constituency that wants that. And zoning, you know, i- is, is going to be, you know, it's going to fall by the wayside and, you know, it's, and, and need, need their support. That's a fundamental reality in the town.
The, 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 the goal, goal-setting, decision-making and consensus-building mantra. Anymore, but I, I think that it. It's true for our board at, at a small scale, but it's true of. All, all the boards and all the kind of, uh, what I'll call. Town leaders for. Having a model for making good decisions and not just, you know, just because two of my friends say this and, you know, we should change the zoning bylaw to.
I don't think we're, I don't think this board is guilty of any of that. I don't think we have.
I'm, I'm just saying, we, we, we have a problem of communication generally. Coming out of COVID and then working on this. Concept that I think Amy and I are, are working on. I think it's, I think it's a good one, Tom. I.
Yeah, I'm not.
I, I don't, maybe we should just, let's, let's stew on it and leave it for now.
All right, well, let's, let's.
Bring it up at our next meeting, okay?
Let's, let's do this.
On the agenda for our next meeting.
On our, on our agenda for the next meeting will be our own. Setting of goals and objectives for us.
Good.
That's where it fits. That's where it fits.
Right, and then.
Move it there. The more objective is it.
We'll talk to the housing.
Talking about the same thing for twenty-five minutes now.
Now, the select board, again, they are the bigger picture folks and they're setting their goals and objectives, you know, for them to discuss them next week. That's a short timeframe. There's nothing that prevents any one of us from appearing at their meeting live or on Zoom and expressing an opinion about that. And if their priorities. Are not taken into account, like we already said, we're going to craft a statement for them to start making the master plan. A priority again. Okay, are there other things we should? Is the idea that there needs to be some kind of inter-board? Consensus on the future direction of the town neededly? Let's, let's refine that and bring that to them.
Yeah, I, I, I just, so you.
The structure is that they are at the top of the pyramid. That's all. That's.
Open meeting. I, I did talk to Chris Plex when I returned his sign. And I said to him, here are my concerns. And he agreed. He said he understood them and um, mine are very, some very basic things that. That have to do with how we get people involved in what we need them to do in town. And they are term limits, which are crazy. There's no reason there should be a term limit on conservation, but there isn't on planning board. That's ridiculous. So let's get rid of it completely. There are people who are qualified to be on that board. And they can't go back on more than qualified and are ready to do it. Concon has a term limit. So. Oh, that's what Chris said to me. It's had, Concon's had a term limit. So there are people who've been on and we can't get back on it. So, you know, we have, there's, there's term, there's, there's a, a time limit, you know, you, how long you're going to be on a board? I think we would have a lot more people, and this is going off topic, a lot more people involved in town government if it wasn't five years. That's a long time for, for a lot of our young people in town to commit to right now. And, and I have, I'm with all these young families and they're not, some of them aren't that young. They'd love to get involved, but five years, they don't know where they're going to be next year. So let's talk about something better. So there are a lot of things, Tom, I think you're right. That if people can be at the select board, if they can't do it in person, then let's do it in writing individually, et cetera. But I understand what Tom and Amy are, I mean, Clark and Amy are saying, let's put that, that is part of how we operate.
Can you, can you, can you refine that, Amy, into something to, to get to the side?
Be great.
You and, you and Clark are working on the statement about the master plan. Why don't you work on that as well?
I think that's, I, I, I would be glad to take up that. Mantle primarily because we put so much work in and. As Clark has mentioned in a number of times, this isn't his first time on the, the merry-go-round. And the thought of not executing anything on the basis of all the work that went into that. Is something we would like to avoid.
Yeah, and I gotta tell you, personally, I fear that for the bylaw effort. I, 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 I've already, you know, I, I, I've, I've heard statements that disturb me that, you know. Making this an overly political process when it's not, and I, I, I really am worried that the rug will get pulled out of it. I mean, I. I'm not, I don't have the reason to say.
I don't understand why a small town like this would, that politics would enter into it. We, 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 if we're all in the boat rowing. Or. For Cohasset, then.
Well, why did we have divisions?
It's not like, cause my buddies agree with me.
But why did we have divisions on the select board for the last year or whatever? The, the, you know, it was a divided board. I don't know why we do.
It doesn't make any sense to me either.
But I, I, you know, privately, I'm, I'm always hedging. That the rug could get pulled out from under the bylaw effort and a lot of time has been put in. And then, and, and I'm worried about that. I, 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 again, I don't have an objective.
No one wants.
Reason to believe that, but based on what I've seen other commit, happen to other committees, put in a lot of work, I, I have to keep it in the back of my mind that that might happen. We'll see.
Well, Tom, to that end, then, does that mean, I'm just gonna put this out there and I don't want more than like. One minute of discussion on this. All right, we're approaching eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Are we biting off more right now than maybe we should? Okay, perhaps. And it's a, it's a way to hedge the path forward, Tom. Should we just be doing a fraction of what the. Goal is to get done here in the next couple of town meetings so that we can have further time to discuss some of the changes that are proposed. And clarifications and everything else. Um, so that if the rug does get pulled out, it's not the whole stack of cards, so to speak. It's just a fraction of it. You know, what you said is exactly what happened with the town hall committee. And multiple committees in that and multiple amounts of money that were put forth for studies, pre-designed work, okay? And then it just. Got the rug pulled out of it because of what happened at the last town meeting. I just put that forth as a question, Tom, and I don't have the answer, but I'm wondering.
And it's been discussed and that, that's why the bylaw is going over three town meetings instead of two because. But there is a practical thing that it's hard to chop it up into too many pieces because you're still trying to keep a cohesive whole and that's. That's the challenge. Uh, it should have all been done in a perfect world. It's done all at once, but. Not doing that, so. Amy. I hear what you're saying.
I, I think what Kevin has just articulated is really important for all of us. In the sense that. This is not an apolitical process. It is a political process. It is, we are also living in a dynamic community in which. Every year we probably have twenty-five people that leave and twenty-five people that come in. When we try to do something as heroic. As changing a system of regulation that has not been changed for more than thirty-five years. It's very difficult to do and there's all sorts of constraints on it, both the lack of understanding of the past. The understanding and vision of the present and the fear of the future. That's why when we as a board get together and try to figure this out. That's why you bring in a professional, which is somebody that helps you take all of those consequences together and say, all right. So this is, looks like over here, somebody's made a pretty good argument that this is a, a no-go right now. Here is something that is totally tangible, can be done without, and moving the future forward. And that's my only point, which is that we are, we are lay boards without. The only professional planner here in this room right now is Cassandra. She is the only person who is in that position. And yet we are a, a group of six or seven people that are also trying to behave like that and learn from it. And so that's why I'm asking for more support. Because if a select board comes forward and disagrees with us. In light of all the effort that we undertake, whatever direction we go. And we're just stuck in the water. And that's why you have facilitation so that you don't get stuck in the water and then just float. And that's, that's what my concern is. We shouldn't, we shouldn't expect our planner to be able to do miracles. We can't do miracles, but what we can do is find support and, and infrastructure to help us do the best job possible. So that when we communicate our, our decisions, people understand what we're saying.
I, I agree with Amy's sentiment. I'd just like to table this for this meeting and bring it up at our next one. So we can maybe do some research on the, on the concept.
So our next meeting, we, we, we're not anticipating any hearings, right? I'm sorry?
I said correct. Yes.
So we will discuss goals and objectives and more on this and we will. Invite open space and we will invite affordable housing. We will, between now and Tuesday, make some thoughts known on the select board on their. Goals and priorities. In particular with respect to the master plan and perhaps with a more. Townwide facilitation. I can just phrase it that way. On the many, many mega issues that are on their plate. Which, some of which are on our plate, they have others, they have financial ones that we don't. Um, if, if you and Amy and Clark, between the two of you can articulate those two concerns to them by Tuesday, that's great. I want to run it by everybody. Everybody, just give it a pass and look at it. That would be great. I think we should try to influence what they're, you know, what directions they're taking. Um, all right, good discussion. Take, anybody else have anything else? The only other thing on the agenda I wanted to discuss is, um, you know, it keeps coming up again and again and again and again. We have design and harbor, uh, design regulations for the village and the harbor. There's a great deal of sentiment to extend that to three A to get that in place on three A before. You know, housing choice zoning and any other zoning is put in.
Maybe it could be done as a part of housing choice.
Well, I, I just, I guess my, my question was, I, you know, and then from guidelines, the regulations, when it came up with the. The gas station project. You know, they had originally, if you remember, it harked on the section that said be innovative and then they, then they were innovative and nobody liked the design. I wonder if anybody, again, this is asking for a time commitment, wants to look at our.
No, I think, Tom, it's an outside consultant thing. I.
Okay, that's fine.
I, while I might have the expertise, I don't have the bandwidth.
You don't have the bandwidth because I'm zoning. We're asking you to do a lot of stuff.
Um, I really think it's a specialty. Uh, I mean, we modified the village bylaw for the, uh, village guidelines for the harbor. Um, overlay district. But three, you know, three A is a different animal with highway, state.
Did you have, did you have outside expertise? Did you have outside expertise when you put those together?
The guidelines, yeah, they came from, uh, what's his name? Angus, Angus Jennings.
Who was, who was?
That time ago.
It seems like yesterday.
Well, no, I'm just saying not to reinvent the wheel, go to the same source, but.
No, 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 we need to go to somebody who's doing that kind of work right now.
Right, yep.
Judy Barrett's firm where Lauren has landed?
Sure, we could hire Lauren to do the guidelines.
I think we should put out an RFP and see who shows up.
MAPC, the right person.
All right, Cassandra, look into whether we would need to put that out in an RFP or not. If not, I would, I would make an inquiry to Lauren, um, because again. Sooner rather than later to have some of these things in place before the development is coming, that is coming.
I think it needs to be in concert with the zoning changes for housing.
Oh, yeah, no, right. Yeah, I mean, we, if we're gonna have multiple housing on three A, we want it to look a certain way. We don't want it to look like, and I know I pointed this out to the developers, don't make it look like that. Project down in situ at on three A. I think it's, you know.
Well, you know, right now, Tom, it was, it was clear to me that your kind of concept for the buildings based on density is a big box. Uh, apartment building and, and I, and I don't think that's the vision that. Is good for the future of Cohasset.
I get that, but that's.
We just need to get beyond, uh, the simplistic versions of.
I, I understand that and as we talked at the bylaw committee on one day.
Forms and.
But the unfortunate, the unfortunate. Part of these state regulations under housing choice is that they're pushing us to the box. Because of the density.
Yeah, well, we.
If we can get around that under housing choice, I'm all for it. I don't want to see a box. I don't want to see three store the box.
We just have to have the wheel and a model in front of us.
Yeah, and we have to show compliance with the, with an attorney general.
Saying not comply. I'm just, I'm saying.
I get it. I get it. And to do that, we'd probably have to zone more land than we originally would have thought.
That's exactly right. That's exactly right. If you don't want a box and something dense in it, you'd need to spread it out.
Right.
And you can spread it all the way along a longer corridor. To get your required numbers or you can concentrate it in the right location or wrong location. I mean. You know, and if it's not done right with enough foresight and with models that people can see, touch, walk around, understand the scale of it. It'll be done in an inadequate amount of time and something will be forced upon us and no one's good, no one will be happy.
And again, though, at the same time, meantime, developers can come along and under other existing laws force their. Projects on us because we are studying, we're studying to death. We are studying ourselves to death, you know.
No, I, I, I don't.
Well, that's a Cohasset, that's a Cohasset trait too that goes back the thirty years I've been involved.
I don't think anyone's talking about studying something to depth, but when you're talking about, okay. We need to come to terms with what the state is put in front of us, okay? If someone says just limited to one train station, do they understand what that means? Okay? I mean, something simple, straightforward like that. Can put you in a box where you have less alternatives. And if you say, yeah, we need to consider. Two train stations, we have the opportunity to do so, but there's a higher lift with that. Because we got a town line running through nearby one of them. We need to get on the horn now and start getting those lines of communications. To know what the options are there and whether they're real or not. And if we just don't do it, and if the government goes as slow as it does on this, you're absolutely right. A developer is going to come in with their solution. They're gonna have an easy glide path for it. Because existing rules can allow that when someone or a town or an entity is asleep at the wheel.
Yeah, and that's what, that's what we are facing at the moment.
Right, well, we have a new concept for housing and, um, the, the simple, the simple model is what people co- comes to mind. Uh, initially, and it's, it's a part of human nature. I think we just have to work through it.
Yeah, they, they comes to mind is what they're familiar with. And what they.
What comes to mind in this economy is what they get the most bang of the buck out of.
Well, whose mind are we talking about? The community, the neighbor?
Yeah, I, I understand that. If, you know, for example, this, this, this idea of a hundred and thirty-three units south of Shaw's. Um, that is on an eight acre site. It's got wetlands. It's constrained even, you know, so you can't use the full eight acres. You know, again, I'm not sure how they permit it under our existing zoning exactly, but there's forty B is an option and. You know, the, the economics of it are such that they need to get as many, you know, is hundred and thirty-three the number? No, most times a developer will negotiate down somewhat, but you know, a lot of units is the number and, and they're, you know, on a. On a site that maybe is of eight acres, it's maybe six, that's not wetlands that might be able to be built on, you know. The, the, the economics are such that they're not going to do a small little. Community, that, that's, that's just a reality. And I'm not saying I'm, I don't agree with it at all, but it's the reality. I do try to deal with what the reality is. Yes, Amy.
Um. The, the interesting point you just made. Should cause us to feel both less stressed out and. A little bit calmer than we might be because they have pre-existing regulations about the use of land. So you're not going to tear up wetlands. You're not going to do, I mean, they basically used a sixty-four by X. Map and laid it on the state and said. This will be where we put people based on this configuration. That is not what's going to happen. And it's already clear as people are talking through. At the legislature as well as in the, in the agencies, they're saying, well, you know, we really realize we create all these things. We have to work about there. Nobody has the answer. What they're just trying to do is to come up with a number of. Units that people can live in that also match with demographics. We. We have to be trusting of ourselves and be courageous in our design anticipation. Of how to make a place like ourselves to be accommodating and also not violate our core values. And I think that we have the opportunity to do that. It's all not gonna happen at once. They're not gonna come in and say, okay, we're gonna cordon off this area because you didn't do it when you were supposed to, and this is what we're gonna give you. And and we have to believe that because we're smart enough to know how to argue the opposite.
Well, I I and and I'm not disagreeing with you, but I. And and I, you know, my own personal belief is a town like Cohasset has just as much of an obligation as every other town in the state to. To address our housing needs and I'll just tell you what Dave Farad brought up Monday night and he brought it up last night to the select board. And he works at DCR. That the state has now, you know, at once they said our housing need was fifty thousand or a hundred thousand units. Well, now it's up to half a million units. And he said, if you're thinking that housing choice is their last weapon that they're going to bring out to address this. You you're naive, that they will come at us with other things. They may change forty B, for example, who knows what they'll do? The state, at the state level, there are people who believe that we are in a housing crisis, that we have a shortfall of units. For the people who want to live in this common home. And they think that burden should be spread across the entire state, not just the big cities. And they are, forty B was the opening salvo in that twenty years, twenty-five years ago. That, and now we have housing choice. Dave's, oh, no, Dave's warning, not mine, Dave's warning is, don't think this is the end of what the state is going to impose. To get what it feels it seriously needs, which is more housing units.
Tom, I can say that. I'm a professional, that's, that is not a useful conversation to have. Is it, is it to scare people into giving in to some? I I think that's, as a professional, that does not make any professional sense at all. This is an evolving process, we have to work with it. The smarter and the sooner we do that, the better off we are. And I I find that discussion, if somebody had a discussion like that, it doesn't comport with any experience I've ever had.
Well, you know, that that could be, that that could ring true and it could be, you know, outside of even eastern Massachusetts, Amy. You know, it could be in the far southeastern corner of the state, it could be tapping into central and western part of the state. And along the corridors of transit that may already exist, but may not be fully utilized, and I'm thinking about like. Non-MBTA rail corridors, um that type of thing, so. We don't have to move forward here with a sense of fear, but we just need to be aware of. We're at a a pretty important time to really make sure not just we on this board make the right decisions. And best decisions we can through fruitful, honest, contemplative discussions. But the other boards that need to travel along with this do as well, because this isn't just something for us here.
No, that's, that's why we're trying to talk to the select board regularly about this and why we try to seek input, but. I'm of the view, just the alternative is that at the same time where we don't have to operate in fears, that Cohasset has to stop. Mentality that it has got a fence around it and the rest of the outside world doesn't affect it and doesn't get to come in. And that's been a longstanding thing since I've lived here. And, you know, I'm not, I think six hundred and thirty-eight units is crazy, it's unrealistic. It's the state doing something stupid with one side of its all, but it's not zero. You know, the minimalist approach is to take two properties we have near the Cohasset station that are developed and that. Two of them together would be forty-seven acres, meets the acreage requirement. But realistically, those two project properties are not gonna get torn down and rebuilt to the density that the state wants. So it's compliance, but it's not reality that we'll ever see a unit. And I'm not so sure the state will accept that kind of response anymore that we try to keep dodging the bullet. You know, I just, it's be great if they send things to central mass and western mass, but developers don't wanna go there. But the problem with the whole thing is they impose these things, and yet they still depend on the private development community to produce them. And they're gonna go where the money is, and they're not, that means they're not going to central mass and western mass and rural mass. They're coming here and and we are all of a sudden an attractive place because of the property values and the money to be made. It's all about the money. And we just have to face that in a realistic way, and I'd rather face it rather than. Study to study, study, yes, but not study too much to the point where others come in and impose other solutions on us that we do not want to have.
Well, we're not at that point yet, Tom.
No, we're getting there, but I'm just saying.
We are not at that point yet. But everyone's still learning about this. Housing choice, a- as Amy said, uh including the state, trying to figure out what, what's a, what's the path forward? With this concept.
Understood, alright, well, it's good that we're having this discussion because, you know, again, at some point we have to turn it into real words on paper. So, um and not just, it's not a philosophical discussion at some point, so. Good that we're having it, so we'll, again, we'll follow up on this on our next meeting, invite two committees. Get the statement for the select board, um and then we'll see about our July meeting, see where we are, you know. But ha- having the time to do things like this, I think is very helpful to us. Yes, Clark?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Tom.
Okay.
I second.
Alright, all in favor?
Kevin Heiner.
Thank you, Cassandra.
We'll see you next time.
Yep.
Hi, thank you.